Okay, thanks for being here. Let's stand for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. President Hammond.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Here.
Trustee Parr.
Here.
Trustee Schwartz.
Here.
We're going to start tonight's meeting with a moment of silence for our, for two gentlemen, Mr. Nicholas Budney and Mr. Richard Tomlinz. They were both Haldane graduates, Cold Spring Community members, and Mr. Tomlinz was also Thank you. Our thoughts are with their families. So we have a skeleton crew here tonight. I'm pin-shitting for Laura Hammond, who joins us remotely because she's ill and doesn't want to contaminate any of us. And Peggy Clements is at a Nelsonville zoning board meeting, of which she's also a board member. And although she, I'm sure would prefer to be here if she had something important pressing, she had to be there. And Ms. Fael Mularo is also out ill, I believe, as well. So we're all just keeping it together, and I don't have my iPad, so if this Board Docs version is any different, because sometimes it's just a hair off, keep me honest.
Okay. You got it.
Okay, so we're going to start by just announcing that the Board of Education has an election coming up. We have two seats that are open and two seats that will be available for election. Applications are due by Monday, April 16th, at 5:00 p.m., and applications can be picked up in the district office, or they will be emailed to you. The trustee seats that are available are three-year terms. They would start July 1st, 2018, and through June 30th, 2021. And trustee Margaret Parr and trustee Evan Schwartz are, it's their seats that are up for reelection. So I was going to turn it over to Evan and Margaret if you guys wanted to make any statement about your intentions, or if you're not ready to make any statement about your intentions about running. Just give you a chance to chat about that.
So I will. So this was my fourth term on the Board. I've been saying 10 years, but actually, I think it was 11. This would have been 11 years, right? 11, right? So 11 years on the Board. So this will be my last year on the Board. I'm not going to run for reelection. We've got a great new, young administrative staff anchored by the veteran Ms. Sniffin. So we leave, we leave Haldane in good hands, and we have a lot of work to do, so this is far from, from walking away over the next few months. But it's been a pleasure being on the Board, and I encourage people to run. We have two seats, so we should have, you know, if we have multiple people running, we can have a really good election and some great conversation.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
We tried. We tried to pull him in. He wasn't happy.
You tried.
He was like, I didn't know.
You did try.
And I'm going to go on record as saying undecided.
Okay, so there we have it. Stay tuned for more information about that. But if anyone has questions about running for the Board, what it means to be a board member, if anybody thinks they know anybody who might be a good board member, all of us, including Laura and Peggy, are really happy to talk about it. So just reach out. And we're going to move into a, oh, and before we do that, I, we asked, we were thinking about putting the trustee election on like unfinished business, kind of like we do with the superintendent search, so that we could just keep, just keep it out there with dates and deadlines and stuff like that, if that's okay with you guys. Thank you. Okay, so tonight's special presentation is our Communities That Care Coalition is presenting to us. Ms. Lisa Scluna is here, and Dr. Bowers, I'll let you give the introduction.
So four years ago, we had Putnam County visit the Haldane School District to talk about creating a Phillips Town Communities That Care Coalition. And it was something that we wholeheartedly endorsed. We started the process. We had members of the Communities That Care Coalition in Putnam County come over, and we had an immediate committee that kind of coalesced. And we've gone through some interesting changes over the four-year period. We have some leaders that certainly stepped up, Lisa Scluna being one of them, and she is our leader now. We also have Daniel Pack McCarthy, who has been very much in the leadership role as well, but Danielle wasn't able to be here tonight. But we wanted to share with you some of the great work that's been done, and it's been far-reaching. There's been a lot of people that have stepped up to the plate and have helped to support the Communities That Care Coalition and the people that it supports. And so Lisa's here to kind of share our journey for the last four years. So Lisa.
So thank you for having me here tonight. This is something that's passionate to many of us in the community.
Just that coalition?
Sure. So as mentioned, this did, this coalition did start in 2014. It started with conversations with people throughout our community during, you know, a time where we were asking people from different sectors to give their input as to the substance abuse problem that was occurring. All of our conversations were data-driven, and they were specific to the problems that we saw here in Phillips Town. A lot of work was done over those next two years, and in 2016, the coalition was formalized with a coordinating council and principles of operation. The mission of the Phillips Town Communities That Care Coalition is to prevent and reduce substance use within our children, our youth, and our community. And we do this by raising awareness and providing information, education, and referrals to those that want it. The coalition meets monthly, and anyone is welcome to attend these meetings. Some of the accomplishments that we've had over the years that we're quite proud about, we've assisted in obtaining a prescription med drop box located in the Phillips Town Town Hall, and we've educated seniors and families about the importance of securing their prescription medications in their homes through the use of a medication lock box. Drug World has been an amazing partner within our coalition, especially as it pertains to this. We've set up a web page that provides information and referral resources. We provide educational articles that you can find on Facebook, and we've assisted in Narcan training for first responders and for anyone in the community that's been interested. Over the summer, we held a candlelight vigil on International Overdose Awareness Day to remember the ones that we've lost to the disease of addiction and to try to reverse the stigma that surrounds it. As a true coalition, we've worked with Haldane and community groups such as the Lions Club to bring a documentary about heroin addiction and a film about the potential dangers that's related to teenage stress today to the community. And most recently, as part of the Friends and Family University, speakers Michael Nerny came and spoke about the teenage brain and risk-taking behaviors, and Stephanie Marcasano of the Harris Project came and spoke about co-occurring disorders with substance abuse being one of them. The Putnam CTC that we work closely with simulated a teen room, and parents and community members were invited to come through and to see if they can find potential hidden signs of risk-taking behaviors. So we have a lot of great work, and a lot of great people make up our coalition. I just wanted to give you an idea of the type of people, you know, throughout our community who come together. This does include Haldane and Garrison administration and staff, law enforcement, Putnam County CTC, and their prevention council. We have people who facilitate local drug rehabilitation and mental health programs, parents, store owners, town government officials, and religious leaders, among others. And we're always grateful to Dr. Bowers for inviting us here tonight, but always promoting our mission. So we've done a lot. We've got a lot to do still, and with such an important task, sometimes it's enormous, and it feels like you're not quite sure where to go with it. We know we have to rely on the things that we, we know, and there is quite a bit there. We know from local data collection and evidence-based research what we can do to keep youth from engaging in dangerous, risky behaviors and potentially going on to having an addiction. We know that prevention is key, and we know that substance misuse typically does not begin with opioids. So we can and we must continue to address the specific concerns such as vaping, marijuana use, underage drinking, prescription pills, and opioids. But we know that we also really have to address the core of the matter, and that's the social emotional health of our kids and our youth. Without doing that, we'll be forever just putting out fires. So these are the things we know, and we have to take advantage of every opportunity to increase the protective factors while we reduce the risk factors. And then this places the best odds in our children's future. The only way to do that is for individuals, families, the community, and schools to all work together, and that really is essentially what the Phillips Town Communities That Care Coalition is about. So thanks. If you have any questions, I would love to take them. It's been a lot.
Thank you so much for your work.
Yeah, thank you. It's been a tremendous group effort, and like I said, it's changed a lot over the years. And we tried to keep looking at what's happening currently, but getting to the core of the matter kind of remains the same.
So I'd just like to share some information. One of the things that happened, that has supported Haldane is some of the relationships that we've made. And one of our partners in the Communities That Care Coalition is Cove Care. And we've been in conversation with Cove Care about the potential of getting a counselor on our, in the district itself. It's a Putnam County counselor. It's somebody that can give psychological support and care within the Haldane School District, and it appears that this is going to be happening very soon. So we have, we know that there, the funding is there, and they're in the process of determining who's going to be joining us. But what this will do is it will, it will, we'll have care here. So people who can't make it over to Carmel or can't travel, they'll have, they'll have psychologists on our campus that will meet with our kids during the school day, probably starting around 10 o'clock. We want them to be here for the high school lunch. And then continuing on through the afternoon and into the early evening, probably a 10 to 6 day. And that will allow parents and families to come in for counseling. This is somebody who's a Putnam County counselor. It's not going to be a Haldane counselor, but they will be housed here. So we're pretty close to the end process of getting that organized here, and because of the CTC, this is something that's been able to happen here.
And Danielle, would that be something that is, like if a kid would go to see the therapist during the day, kind of like they would go to a reading specialist or go see their guidance counselor, like it's just kind of something that happens? Or is it more that, you know, they make an appointment? Does insurance have to get involved if the family's coming? Like, don't we know yet? But...
It's generally paid through insurance, and we do have the capabilities of sending our students to a Putnam County counselor during the day. And if, if there is Medicare or Medicaid students that are here, I guess it'd be Medicaid, if they're Medicaid families, they can go through Medicaid. They can also bill for insurance. But it also allows families, it's not just individual counseling, but it could be individual counseling during the day, the family comes in later on, and so it's, it's kind of a wraparound service that will support any member of our community.
Yeah, and what's so great about that is that one of the issues, right, with like people who feel like they need mental health counseling or their kids need some support, there's all these obstacles. Well, where do I go? How do I get them there? You know, how do I know they're good? Now to work that in my schedule, the travel time there and back. And then we just took away a whole bunch of the obstacles by having it here. And that's, that's great.
So, so thank you, Lisa, for all of your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Dr. Bowers, you want to continue on with your report?
So one of the other people who aren't, who can't make it tonight because she is in Binghamton, and she's at a My Learning Plans conference, that's the management system we use for our APPR, Annual Professional Performance Review, for our faculty, so is Julie Sniffin. And so she asked me to share that she has recently gone to Garrison and presented to the Garrison Board about Haldane. So this is an annual visit that we make. The Garrison students came here, and they got to know Haldane, and were you a part of that for when the Garrison kids came?
No, I wasn't.
Oh, okay. So I don't know if, do you have a part of that in your report?
I actually didn't, but I could speak about that, too.
Yeah, okay. Well, if you, if you get a moment to, if you have something you want to share. But she did want me to share that it all went well. We had a number of great kids that came and learned about what we could offer, and pretty soon they're going to be making their decision about whether they're going to be attending Haldane or if they'll be attending O'Neill, so.
And that decision usually happens when?
March, something?
Yeah, probably as we get towards the end of March, generally. Yeah. So yesterday, we had our Safety Committee meeting, and you received a letter from me last week or the week before. Been sending a lot of letters, it seems, in February. A lot of things have been happening. But for Parkland, we talked about the unfortunate events that happened in Parkland, Florida. And we've been talking about how that event has kind of stirred some of the concerns all throughout the United States, but certainly here at Haldane and our neighboring communities. So we invited the public, if they would like to join us, for the Safety Committee meeting yesterday, and we did have a roomful here. We had it here. It was well-attended. There were a number of people that shared some thoughts and some suggestions, and we had a number of things that I want to share with you today. We had one of our students, Noah Bingham, who is working with the Discover, Create, and Innovate class to create packets of, or types of things, information and materials that would be necessary or could be used during a time where students may have to be in, in an area for an extended period of time. And the DCI class is looking at making a package for each classroom that will include things such as water and food and anything else that would be used for an extended period of time. So I know that the PTA has already reached out as a result of his presentation yesterday to talk about their support. Drug World is also, have reached out about their support. And so this is something that is coming from our students, and it's going to be something that's prepared for each classroom throughout the Haldane School District. So we'd like to thank Noah for all his good thoughts there. We also talked about updated security practices here at Haldane, and the first thing we talked about is that, you know, we are very limited in what we share with the public for our security, for our protocols, for security reasons. You know, this is something that the school has extensive plans and crisis intervention manuals and the things that are needed for difficult situations, but it's something that we're not going to, to share on an extensive basis. But we can share a number of things with people. The first, we did another letter went out about the fact that we are now locking the entrance doors, where we did have a greeter at each of the entrances. We did not have the doors locked, and people didn't have to buzz in. So since we've returned from vacation, that is now a practice. So people, when they get to the door and they try to open it and it doesn't open, listen for the click, because you're going to be buzzed in, and that's, we're doing that both at the high school and the main building. And there's some other buildings that need to have equipment included, and that will be happening in the near future. We also talked about a company that we had a presentation, and it was just serendipity that had the presentation planned for last week, but it had been planned for quite a period of time. So with a group called Scholarship. And Scholarship is, it, they have entrance software that really, that people use. They scan their licenses, and it gives us immediate information on the people coming into the building. It creates a badge that they can put on their clothing that has their picture, where they're going, the date, and the time, so we know who should be in the building and when they should be there. So that's something that, it's, it's relatively inexpensive for what you're getting from it, so we're very glad that we think we can swing it through this year or through Bosie's, and then it will go into the budget for next year. We also are talking about and should be happening in the near future, and we're trying to coordinate that, is some kind of security measure at the gym entrance at, from 2:00 on in the afternoon. Right now, when we open the door for, for games and for practices, we have people in and out, but there's no security there. So that's something that we're planning on hopefully coordinating in the very near future, and that's something that we'll be including in, in the budget for next year. So I wanted to share those three things.
Danielle, any conversations regarding the SRO as far as expanding, like, or getting another person in that similar type of role?
Well, not necessarily. I was kind of surprised it didn't come up yesterday, but I have been talking to parents that have suggested that. And there will be two PTA coffees where security and safety are the topic. One will be Thursday morning at 9:00 here, and one will be Thursday evening here at 6:00. I anticipate hearing more about that. And one of the things that we'll have to talk about, and we met with Putnam County, the Sheriff's Department, yesterday. They also, if you remember, when we were first talking about getting an SRO, they have SPOs. And so that may be something that we're hearing again, and they are retired police. They are armed, they're trained, but they're not a, an active police or sheriff's department member like Matt is. There are a number of districts that have SROs and SPOs, and if they replicate more than one of the positions, one of the options would be an SPO. And that is, it's financially far less for a district because, because it is a retired police officer or somebody who's worked through New York State. As in all New York State positions, when you retire, you can make up to $30,000. And so the cost of the SPO is for that $30,000. So if that does come up, and I'm, I'm almost sure that it will come up on Thursday, because I know that there have been parents that have talked to me about it.
And just to clarify, that would be in addition to the current?
That would be in addition. Yep.
Is there going to be a, so I know that the, the locking of the doors was an immediate put in place, but will there be some sort of proposal to the Board? Because you're having like these conversations yesterday, there's more conversations Thursday, you're getting some information from Scholarship on how much that costs. Will there be like a proposal, like this is what you're proposing for?
For now and then in the future.
For now, and then maybe for the future, so that we can kind of get a hold of it, and also like how much it would, it would cost?
Right.
And really, you know, get an understanding of your thinking, because it's, there's a lot of different ways it can go and a lot of different ideas, and we don't want to just Band-Aid things together. We know, we want like a comprehensive plan.
Right. And really, the only thing that we talked about, that we're, we're talking about immediately happening would be just to increase the security at the entrances.
Right.
And that's pretty much it. And, and you know, Scholarship, you know, as far as the cost goes, there is a cost to buy the, the material or the computerized system at the entrances, and that's about, I think, about a $2,500 ticket to buy the equipment to start, and then it's less than $1,000 a year for each of the schools. So it's minimal. So it's not, these are not huge ticket items. We are looking at how we're going to man the, the door after school, and so that's something that we are going to have to look at and determine if we're going to get a security company or if it's, or if we're going to be. It's difficult because it doesn't necessarily fit in any of the areas contractually that we have, so we've been having conversations with that. And then the other things, yes, we will be talking about it. And each time I have a conversation, there's more suggestions and more questions that come from the community. So I think that will be where the package that is given them, these are the suggestions from the community members.
Right. And we talked about wiring the Maple Merritt Building.
Right.
And then we got to figure out where all the money comes from to do these things. So I don't know, maybe it's part of the bond referendum, maybe it's any money from the Smart School Bond Act, maybe it's just put in our budget.
Yep, and we still have some, we still have funds from smart schools that we haven't expended, and we would have to apply for them through the state, and that takes a period of time. But even the systems, the, to buzz in, in someplace like Maple Merritt, it's much cheaper because it's wireless now, and it's, there's, you know, it, there's security systems that are, luckily are up to date and can help us with this situation. But that's something, so we're going to have a minimal output, at least initially. These are not big ticket items, but they are things that will increase security.
And you talked about a security audit as well.
Yes. So also on our website tonight, we have a list of things that was given out yesterday. We have, we've contracted with Frank Uglieri, and we actually are members of this, the safety, the safety group at Putnam Northern Westchester Bosie's. So a lot of this is already paid for. And so we've asked him to do a safety and security audit, and there will be additional charges when they're here actually doing assessments, but a lot of what is going to be done is, is already part of the program. So there's a list of things that are included in safety audits. We actually had a similar type of safe, safety audit in 2013, and the, some of the changes that were made in the bond referendum that happened in 2014 were directly related to this, to safety audit at that point, the safety and security audit. It was 2014, 2014, right? So at this point, that may repeat itself, and we talked a little bit about that yesterday, that if there's anything that's, that we really want to look at now, as we continue to talk about the bond referendum, that might be something that we want to include in there. So this is all happening at a time that we can still do that. We can, and so if people want to take a look at what's going to be included, or if people have any areas of interest they would like us to consider, please come to the coffees on Thursday. Again, one at 9:00 and one at 6:00.
And just to update everybody, we had, the Board had decided to do a transportation audit this year because we wanted to see what was going on with our transportation department in terms of are we maximizing our money, are we, our roots? And we also wanted to know, can we consolidate if we ever wanted to go to a different start time? So it was all part of this big thing, and then we set aside the money for it, and it has been a, one issue after another, trying to get this transportation audit done. The companies keep...
It's sold out.
Keep signing up and then signing off, and then, so we haven't done the transportation audit this year, which we thought we would, but we still have the funds allocated, so we can now put them towards a security audit, which seems a little bit more pressing.
Okay, so a couple of other things, and actually, I'm going to skip around. There's a couple of things that I haven't shared or weren't listed, but I think I should share there. And we just added, I think the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents just set out a position paper on the things that we feel are important now, and there were, it was very clear about our support for increasing laws for gun safety and also funding for mental health. And one of the things that we want to make sure that people understand, it's not a singular issue. It's, there are multiple issues, and we can't really talk about gun safety without talking about mental health. So that's something that really has to be, they have to be talked about simultaneously. And so that was something that certainly has been supported by the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents, and there have, there's been a lot of conversation about it. The paper was released earlier in this, earlier on this week, and we will continue to, to support moving forward in the most productive way for our students and their safety.
Dr. Bowers?
Yes?
Can I just hop in there and just ask a question regarding some of the mental health changes that will be coming from Albany? I've read some things on Eclipse. Are you aware of any changes that will be happening to allow schools to be able to address more of the mental health?
Yeah. And I think that a lot of it is going to be a funding stream that will allow that to occur. I think that there's, there has been conversation, especially coming from the governor's office, that said basically what I just said. You can't talk about gun safety without talking about mental health services. So there, there is a lot of conversation... So there is a lot of conversation now about the potential of a funding stream that will help to support additional mental health services for schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And the last thing, and you may be talking about this as well, but for, I've had a number of people begin to talk about and request kind of an understanding about the walkout, which is something that's been talked about quite a bit from March 14th. And there is, there is kind of a national movement asking high school students and upper middle level students potentially to support an initiative that really highlights the deaths that occurred in Parkland, Florida. And it's a, they're requesting a 17-minute walkout, which is what's being called. And we are going to be, Mrs. Sniffin and I are meeting with the student government, I believe it's Thursday, and we're going to be talking about what is it that the schools want to do. And one of the things, we are, we are in full support of what the students would like to do and we have to, we have to work it out together and make sure that it meets everybody's needs. But one of the, one of the biggest concerns that we have to consider is also the safety of having everybody outside at a specified time in a day. And that's something that we're going to talk to the students about and how we can, how we can achieve everything you want to achieve without creating a potential security issue. So please, go ahead.
I believe the Women Empowerment Group that I and Freya Gallagher run at the school is also meeting on Thursday. And Freya and I had been looking to organize the walkouts, so we're definitely looking forward to talking with you and Ms. Sniffin on Thursday about the details of that or the administration's opinion and everything related to that.
And I think, you know, I think that the powerful, the power of it is if we plan it together and we create something that's meaningful for everybody that's involved. And I did have a couple of parents that emailed today and said, and basically asked, what is the school's stance on it? And basically I said, I'm not sure exactly what it is until I talk to the kids, but I can tell you, I'll be right there with them. So we're going to be moving on and moving forward with that. New Haldane website, we are going to, in the very near like future, like within a day or two, I think we are going to be launching our new Haldane website. We did make a change in our website that has been a tier up within the last couple of years, but it's still not where we want it to be. And this has been an area that the board has really been asking us to bring into, a website that really matches the 21st century. So we, we were able to find a company that could help us develop a really very beautiful, productive website that we're probably 90% of the way there. And we will be launching it, asking people to give us their suggestions and their thoughts. It's beautiful. It has a lot of information. It probably will be a work in progress from the moment we launch it until forever. But if you, if you have a moment, you want to go through and scan, see the different components that we have and give us any suggestions. Megan Shields has been working with the company for the last, close to a year at this point, getting everything that we need in order to create the website. So we're there. The next meeting of the Haldane Board of Education Business Meeting is going to be next Tuesday. We lost a week last week because we were on vacation, so we're going to have two meetings back to back. And we're going to be spending a lot of time talking about the budget at that, that meeting and the educational rationale. And then I have one last thing that may require a little bit of a conversation. So we have been, and you've probably have heard me talk about the fact that we have been advertising and trying to hire new bus drivers. And we are at the point that we have a skeletal crew. We unfortunately have two additional bus drivers that went out on medical leaves this week. And so we're getting to the point that it is extraordinarily tight. We are using our cleaner drivers and our maintenance guys with CDL to drive buses because we don't have enough bus drivers in order to do that. And we have been advertising and advertising and advertising. And we are not having people apply for the positions because ours is a five-hour, part-time position without benefits. And the next district over is a full-time position with benefits. And we just can't compete. And obviously, if somebody can get a full-time position with benefits and ours is a five-hour position without, they're going to go to the other district. So we had a long conversation today with our, our maintenance and CDL workers and the Director of Transportation and our Head Dispatcher. And we're at the point that, that we realize the need to start changing our philosophies and looking at hiring full-time drivers that get benefits so we can have bus drivers that meet our needs. And Ann was able to go through and do a very quick initial assessment as far as the funding and what we presently have in the funding lines and whether we have, whether we have the funds to hire full-time people. And basically with the positions that we've had and some of the positions we haven't filled, we've been, and the overtime that we're paying because we're using our cleaner drivers and our maintenance with CDL people to drive buses, we have the potential of hiring two or three without any additional costs. So I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that.
Sure. During the meeting, we, you know, the question was posed, how many full-time drivers would we need to keep us going and be efficient and also not have to pull staff from their regular jobs during the day? And the answer was, well, if money wasn't an object, it would be four. We did lose, whether it's people resigning, going on to other positions or being out on a leave, between five and seven drivers. And that's, it's really becoming a problem in the department. And it's spilling over into the other departments, the maintenance and the cleaning department. So as Dr. Bauer stated, adding the cost of the part-time drivers and then adding on top of that, the overtime that we're spending to get the regular jobs done and drive, it could be, you know, probably three full positions. I didn't pull all of the details, but the calculations that I figured out of how many hours the part-time drivers work versus full-time. And then, you know, going forward, we can maybe talk about what we can offer a full-time driver, what's in, versus what's in the contract. I don't know if we want to have any discussions. We might be able to get a fourth full-time driver. That would really, really be helpful. But again, the conversation just started today. And, you know, quick calculations show that it would, it would really be helpful. I mean, 10 years ago, replacing people with part-time staff worked. Fast forward 10 years and people's desires and their lives have changed. So the world has changed and we have to change with it.
What would a full-time driver do, like what would be the expectation of a full-time driver if, I mean, obviously if there's a trip or something like that, that they would be driving, right, during a trip? But if there was no trip or anything, what would be the expectation that a full-time driver would do during the day?
Well, this is why we have our cleaner driver positions, so that the gap in between a morning and an afternoon run is filled with other duties. Right now, our full-time drivers have a split shift and it works for them. They come in in the morning, they do a morning run and they're off for the middle of the day, unless there might be a field trip that they're going to get overtime for, because their real day is a morning run and an afternoon run. Anything more than that, it's contractual, that it's overtime. But there is a gap in their day. Some people don't want that either, even with benefits. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of different options that we need to consider.
But how does it become full-time? If like their morning bus driving is like 7:00 to 9:00, it's two hours. And then the afternoon bus driving is from 2:30 to 4:30?
Right. In our contract, in the CSA contract, a full-time bus driver is described as six hours and over. So it depends on what a regular shift being assigned to that driver is. It could be six and a half hours, it could be seven hours. And their annual salary is calculated based on hourly. But they're eligible for benefits if it's six hours and over.
But do we even have six hours? If they do a morning run and an afternoon run, is that six hours of driving?
Well, there's also, we have.
They start earlier than seven.
Yeah. And they start earlier than, I mean, the, the high school releases shortly after 2:00 and that's, and they have to do pre-trips and they can do cleaning on the buses. We can actually, you know, we could say instead of having cleaner drivers, maybe we could do driver cleaners and maybe there would be additional time in there. So we have to kind of figure out what it looks like. But right now, I think we have two full-time bus drivers. Is that how many we have?
Yes, we have two. Two on staff now. But it's not just one run in the morning. It's the high school run and then they go pick up the elementary. And then in the afternoon, it's two. So they're out twice. So that does add up because they need to wait. They do pre-trips.
And that's an extensive, you know, there's a whole process for a pre-trip and a post-trip. And you have to make sure that nobody fell asleep and, you know, on the bus. And, you know, there's some different things that happen, so, and it also depends on the routes. And then we have sports trips that happen beyond that. And, you know, this is, this has just become, we're at the, we're getting close to being in a real predicament as far as bus drivers go.
So to answer Evan's question, that gap in the middle of the day, they'll be cleaners?
If we, potentially, if it's a cleaner driver position, but if it's a straight bus driver position and there is interest, because benefits are very interesting to people, then they would have the morning runs. They would be off during a gap in the middle of the day and then they would come back for their afternoon run. And that works for some people. Depends on what their life situation is. Some people want that. Some people say, you know, they live too far away, they don't want to, they don't want to have that gap. So, but benefits are really a deciding factor these days on all the districts are really in the same situation. And we lose people, we lose drivers to other districts that are offering more hours and benefits.
So we wanted to share that with you. And so we are going to, we're beginning screening interviews this week for a number of bus drivers and we're going to be looking at the potentials.
Going into our information reports, let's start with May McGrath.
Well, over the break, the ski trip had its annual ski trip to Vermont. This year, we went to Okemo and Stowe. And the trip went really well, aside from some rough conditions on the last day, but other than that, everybody had a great time. And it was once again really successful. Today, Nicole Mitchell gave a talk about eating disorders at this week's Identity Club meeting because it's Eating Disorder Awareness Week. So she gave a presentation on that. And as I'm sure we're all aware, the girls' basketball team won their sectional finals game against Keough at Pace University. But unfortunately, the boys' season ended with a tough game against Alexander Hamilton High School. And then on Friday, the AP Spanish and French classes will be going on an immersion trip to the Taconic Outdoor Center this Friday, which is something they do every year to become more immersed in different cultures. And as we already talked about, Thursday, Student Council and the Women Empowered Group will be meeting with the school administration to discuss potential responses to the recent school shootings as well as school safety.
May, did you want to put a plug in for the play that will be coming up?
Oh, yeah. The play is coming up in a few weeks. It's the 16th, 17th and 18th. And it's going to be Les Misérables. So they've started some more serious preparations for that. Stage crew began today, so they're getting ready.
Great. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Mr. Wallach, elementary school principal.
Good evening, everybody. And Laura, I hope you're feeling better by electronic device. I always like to share with you some fun things that are happening that, actually, these aren't even listed in my report, but they're things you wouldn't know about because you're not in the elementary schools on a, on a daily basis. They both happen to be fourth grade activities, they're just how it worked out today. A few weeks ago, our fourth graders did something called dissecting owl pellets. I don't know if any of you have heard that. If you have kids who've been through fourth grade, you're certainly aware of that. I was a fourth grade teacher for seven years, so I'm very much aware of it. It's not my favorite activity because personally, it's a little gross to me, but the children get so much out of it. It's hands-on science and that's really what we want, is kids learn by doing. And they have, you know, owl pellets that we order from a company that are sanitized and all that. And the kids dig through them and pull out the little bones of the mice that the owls have eaten. And they think it's the most amazing thing in the world and they're actually able to determine what their owl ate based on dissecting this owl pellet. So that happened in all our fourth grade classes about three weeks ago. I know, it does sound a little gross. That's why I did not go into.
I enjoyed watching Margaret's face.
Well, I knew biology or medicine or anything like that was not for me after doing that. But as a, as a teacher, I've done it with, with students and obviously our fourth grade teachers here do it every year as well. And the kids really looked forward to it. They were talking about it for a couple of weeks as they knew it was coming up. So the kids really enjoyed it and got a lot out of it, even if some of us as adults may not think as highly of the activity. Another great activity actually happened today in fourth grade. Our teachers put together Ms. Weed, Mrs. Hartford, Mrs. Prey, along with Mr. Sniffin from the middle school. And we had the middle school debate team come down and talk with our fourth graders about what a debate is like and how you win a debate, because our fourth graders are going to be practicing that skill as, as part of their learning activities in the next few weeks. And that's one thing that's great about this district and this campus is when we need to get some older students, they're, they're just down the hall. So Mr. Sniffin walked down with, I think, 20, 21 middle school students and we had a really good discussion. We squeezed everybody into one classroom. The fourth graders were loving it, getting to ask questions of the older kids. And hopefully that will help them with the work that they're going to be doing in their classroom. So I love the, the collaboration, you know, among our teachers, not just in our building, but between the elementary school and the middle school and obviously at times with the high school as well. So that's something very special that happens here because of the setup of our, our district and our campus. So just want to share those two activities with you and we'll come back and bring some more fun activities for you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mary Ann Seelke, middle school principal.
Good evening, everyone. I want to let everybody know that we got snowed out for the community reads last Thursday. So the snow date is tomorrow at 6:30. So if you're able to come, that would be great. Again, the book that we're reviewing and reading together is Wonder. Also, some other follow-ups from the last board meeting. The Jean Saunders Award Night, Ms. Nisi's seventh grade social studies class worked very hard to prepare their projects. And the Putnam History Museum hosted a viewing party at the Desmond Fish Library. This was last month. I bring this up because we're very proud that we had several winners. Honorable mentions Cecilia Drewey and Sophie Saban. And then in second place, Mairead O'Hara and Madeline Knox. So excellent job all the students did. Also, last month I talked about our, Ms. Gessen and Ms. Hartford's DCI class going to the village board to present their designs for both this tunnel beautification project and the skate park. And I want to follow up on that as well because they, the students impressed the board so much with their thorough research that the tunnel project was basically moved forward. And right now, as we're meeting here, the skate park students are meeting with the town board recreation, Board of Recreation, to talk more and do some follow-up on the skate park. So I'll keep you posted on what happens with that. And it's just been an amazing process for those eighth grade students to see an idea that, you know, blossom into a design, blossom into the opportunity to present to the town board, the village board, and, and now move forward with it. So I'll be keeping you posted on that. On Thursday, we have our fifth grade orientation night for fifth grade parents to come in and talk a little bit and learn a little bit about the transition to middle school. So that's going to be Thursday at 7:00. And also, it was mentioned that Ms. Pack McCarthy- And also, it was mentioned that Ms. Pack McCarthy wasn't here as co-chair for Phillips Town Communities That Care. And the reason for that is because the McCarthy family is in St. Vincent's and the Grenadines, doing some volunteer work there. And together with the amazing sixth-grade team and with Mr. Doudar, we've been able to work in conjunction with the Pack McCarthy family to do some experiences with our sixth graders and sixth-grade students in St. Vincent's and the Grenadines. So our students have been Skyping with those students. And in preparation for those Skype interviews, our students learned how to write open-ended questions and how to interview, how to have a formal interview with somebody that you don't know over the Internet. And I had the opportunity to sit in on some of the interviews, and it's really been quite the experience for our sixth graders. So that's really exciting stuff that's going on right now as well. Thank you.
Ms. Julia Sniffin, our Haldane High School principal isn't here, but her report is available for anyone to read. Dr. Shaw, student support specialist, CSE chair, chief information officer--
Et cetera, et cetera.
Et cetera, et cetera.
So that's the hat that I'll wear tonight as the CSE chair. This time of year is the time that that hat is the one that sticks to my head the most. So as some of us present know, we are very much entrenched in annual reviews right now for our individualized education programs, which have to be renewed on an annual basis. So we traditionally start with high school seniors, which we call Exits. And we have their IEP meetings. And then we work our way down all the way to the elementary school. So we're about two, three, three weeks in to that and have about made our halfway through the high school. And so that's an exciting time for us because we get to sort of figure out what the next school year is going to look like. And we get to congratulate our seniors, who may have been classified some years ago and have now made it all the way through high school with a regional diploma. So it's a fun time of year for that reason. And then also, just to sort of be able to check in on each, every one of our students through an hour-long discussion with the parents, with the teachers, with the students themselves, if they're old enough to participate. One thing that we're doing this year on a trial basis, or sort of a pilot basis, is revisiting the student-driven IEP. So a number of us have returned to that. I think it was an initiative a few years ago. But Jessica Perone, who's the seventh-grade special education teacher, excuse me, sixth-grade special education teacher, and our psychologist, Tara Rounds, and myself have been going through a training to develop the student-driven IEP and to make that process more student-centric. So we can get at their interests, their needs, their strengths, and have them really develop their own program, not just secondary, but post-secondary. So they can tell us what their lives should be like and how we can support them in developing what they want to do after high school. So that's occupying most of my time these days. What I will say, I wanted to revisit really quickly. I wish Ms. Kaluna was still here because I wanted to give a shout-out to everyone who participated in the Parents, Family and Friends University. I keep wanting to call it Parent University because that was its original name. But the Friends and Family University, I think, was a big success, thanks to everyone who was involved, especially Dr. Bowers for her leadership in Cove Care, Green Chimneys. Who am I missing? Who else came out? CTC, obviously, for all the components. Oh, and Ms. Marcusano, Mr. Neary, everyone who put in their time and diligence and emotions into making that event happen. It's not an easy conversation to initiate. It's not an easy conversation to sustain. But it's one that I'm so thankful that we've started here and hopefully, that is really our first annual Friends and Family University. And that we can continue that because I think we can all acknowledge that it's an extremely important topic, like Ms. Kaluna said, for the social-emotional well-being of our students and for what happens when that social-emotional well-being does suffer and results in other crises. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solomon, Director of Athletics, Physical Education, Health, and Dean of Students.
Good evening, everyone. Just a quick announcement, and then I'd like to do a little recap of the winter season. This Monday, March 5th, our varsity and JV sports start. So please make sure that you get your children's paperwork in so that they don't miss practices and we can get the ball rolling on Monday. And then just a quick recap of the winter. May mentioned it earlier, but our varsity girls' basketball team won the Class C championship over the weekend at Pace. The girls played a strong game, and they've advanced to the regionals. So if anyone's interested, that regional game will be next Tuesday, March 6th, at 3:45 at Beacon High School, where they'll play the winner from Section 9, which is still to be determined. So we just want to wish our girls luck as they continue their path with the winter season. I'd also like to give a shout-out to our indoor track team. We had several individual and relay teams break school records this year, and it's quite an accomplishment. And I just want to, you know, read off those names and those individuals. Jonas Pekas is a senior who had a tremendous season and broke three school records. He broke our school record in the 300 meter, the 400 meter, as well as the 600 meter. So congratulations to Jonas on achieving his times. And then we had a four-by-800 relay team of Maura Kaneis, Ashley Haynes, Emma Rippon, and Heather Winnie. They broke the four-by-800 record three separate times during the season, which is a really great accomplishment because they, you know, they didn't settle, they didn't, you know, they weren't happy with their times. They continued to work throughout the season. And they broke it at the league championship, the Class C championship, and at Yale. So congratulations to the relay team. And then one quick thing that's not on my board report. I wanted to thank the district and the board especially for allowing us to continue our hockey merger. We had three hockey players play this year. And for two of those three, it was their senior year. And I had the privilege of going to their senior night a few weeks back. And I know how special that meant to those families and those individuals. I know we had several conversations about whether or not we would continue it last year. But to those two kids and their families, it meant the world. So I just want to thank you for allowing them to have such a great experience. So, thank you.
Great. We're going to move into our consent agenda items.
Chris, did you want to say anything about Allison?
It was in the report.
Yeah.
And I didn't mention, but I would love to mention, at the girls' semifinal game, our senior, one of our seniors, Allison Chiara, scored her thousandth point. It was a tremendous accomplishment. We had a nice little presentation during the game. So I'd just like to congratulate Allison and her teammates and her family. It's a huge milestone, and we want to wish her the best of luck moving forward with her basketball career. Thank you, Evan.
Thank you. Any communication from the public at this time? Oh, yes, please.
Hi, hi, everybody. So just very briefly, I--
Would you like to introduce yourself for anybody who doesn't watch this regularly?
Yes, hi, everyone. I usually don't look at the camera. I'm Andrea McHugh. I am a high school special education teacher, and I'm also the president of the Haldane Faculty Association. And so I just wanted to, as, you know, as the safety measures have been increasing, we are, which we are all very much behind. We're all very happy that this is happening. One of the things that I noticed, and I was talking with, it happened to be a conversation I was having with Martha McAlakis, who is the director of the musical. And she's a community member. She's not a member of the faculty or staff. And I happen to be working with a gentleman who is a sub. He's a leave replacement for a teacher who's out on a short leave. And so I'm wondering if part of the conversation is going to be, will they, will folks like that, who are maybe on leave replacements or who work in the school, but not necessarily in a teacher or staff capacity, would they be getting badges? I think, that's what I think, that's, I think, I was just thinking that that would be an appropriate measure for folks that are going to be here for a while. And I know a while back there, it used to be that when a visitor came in, they would have a visitor sticker. And I don't know if that's something that, that is something that happens? Okay. Oh, have you? We're just, all right. Okay, all right.
And the visitors' stickers will now have pictures of the individual as well.
Yeah, I remember when we went to your school, your old school, Mary Ann, that was, we had the, we had the pictures. And I didn't bring my ID, so I didn't get a picture of it. And--
That's a really good point. So right now, all of our teachers have badges, correct? And all of the employees of the districts, you know, staff, teachers, principals, et cetera, have badges that they wear.
And we're all wearing them, yeah.
Right. But the people who are in regularly, not maybe like a classroom volunteer doesn't need a badge, but somebody who's doing like, who's a coach, you know, coach who's not necessarily a staff member or a--
Well, necessarily, there'd be people that are here during the day, and we have substitute badges. But we would, you know, we have to, I think that one of the things, we're also talking about swipe cards today. And so we're going to have to more centralize with the changes that have been made.
Yeah.
That's been a little bit of an issue, and yes--
Yeah, no, but I mean, I have to say, I feel like from my perspective, I think that it seems that everyone is adjusting to all the, to the changes in a really positive way, and everyone is really seeing, is really understanding the necessity of it. So I feel like, at least from my perspective, it seems to be going smoothly so far. So which is a really nice thing. And, you know, very briefly, I just want to let you know, May, and let you all know. Diana and I had a, Diana and I had a really, it wasn't a very long conversation, but a really positive conversation about the March 14th walkout. And I left that meeting with you feeling really, really good. And I also had a nice, positive conversation with Mrs. Sniffin as well. And so I would just want to let you know, and I just want to just state publicly that the faculty is also 100% in support of whatever it is the students need or want to do on that date. And we want to be there right by your side.
Can I just step in here and suggest that Matt Shelters also be a part of that meeting with you, Dr. Bowers and Mrs. Sniffin?
Sure.
There he is, right there. He gave you the thumbs up.
Yeah, I agree, Laura. Yeah, I think that that's a really good idea. And if there could be a faculty member, I don't know if there already is. Like, I don't know if Ms. Linda's or Ms. McGrath or--
Ms. Linda Freya Olivia Sterling and I talked a little bit today. I know Ms. Linda's concern was more if it was like a walkout with the students, if the teachers would even be able to participate, if not, every student is walking out. So I think we were really looking to Thursday to plan out more of the details and talk to the administration and just kind of get the general feel of what was going on and then move forward with that.
That's cool. I mean, because we, you know, we were batting around some ideas, you and me, the other day. And so, you know, I think we, because we want to support you. And obviously, yes, we want, we want to keep our jobs too. But, so, but we, but I, we were already talking amongst ourselves about some good, like, good ideas. And so, you know, just, we will put ourselves out there for you too. Okay? All right, well, thank you.
We're going to move into our consent agendas and some other business. If anybody would like to leave, you're welcome to. We won't take it personally.
Good night, everyone.
Consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please? We're discussing the Board of Education minutes held on from February 6th. Good night, thank you very much. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda financial. May I have a motion, please?
I'll second.
Any conversation? I will just point out that we are approving, potentially approving, a retainer agreement with a law firm out of Syracuse. This was not initiated because of any sort of disappointment with our current law firm. We will be continuing with them. But our current law firm has multiple local school districts. And at times, there are conflicts of interest when our one law firm has multiple school districts and we're discussing issues with the other school district. So we're basically asking for this other law firm to be our backup in case we ever need one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion, conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, going into unfinished business. First on the agenda is the superintendent search. So just an update for the public on where we're at. The Bozey's consultant team, led by Dr. Jim Ryan, presented the board with what they believe to be their top seven candidates originally. We consider them basically semifinalists. And the board met with six of the seven because one in the process had gotten another job. We met with six of the, six semifinalists over the weekend. And out of those six semifinalists, we narrowed it down to three finalists. Those three finalists will be interviewed again by the board as well as interviewed by a stakeholder committee. And the stakeholder committee, let's see if I can remember everybody. Laura, you let me know if I'm missing somebody. Is a member of the Haldane School Foundation, PTA, Arts Booster Club, Blue Devil Booster Club, Teachers Union, Civil Service Union, Administrators Union, District Office Employees, student, student group. Is that it? Did I miss anybody?
That's everyone--
That's everybody.
--in District Office.
Yep, got that, yep. So it's a comprehensive group of people, all who know our school, have opinions, diverse opinions. And that committee will be meeting with the semifinalists, and the board will. And hopefully, we will have a tough decision to make, and they'll all be fantastic. And we'll take it from there. So to be continued. Those interviews will be held the week of March 12th. The next item to discuss is our board policy review, which Dr. Bowers has been helping us organize. So we're slated to start that on March 6th, which is our next meeting, from 6:30 to 7:00. So that's public. Anybody can come and hear us talk about policy if they'd like to. The regular meeting will start at 7:00. But the regular business meeting will begin at 7:00. But we'll be here at 6:30 talking about policy.
Did we determine which ones we're talking about?
Yeah. Laura sent me a list of suggestions. Let's see if I can pull that.
She said the first fifteen.
It's the first fifteen, so 1:10, 11:10, 11:20, 12:30. I can forward all of these to you as well.
Yeah, Laura, would you mind just sending all of us an email with the policy numbers?
And that's that whole little folder we got.
Yeah.
There's the first two chapters.
And we'll all just come having read those and with any comments or conversation, and we'll try to bang them out. Okey-dokey. All right, any communication from the public? New business. We are approving a revised Haldane School Budget Calendar for 2018-19. Ms. Dineo, would you like to?
Sure. The Tuesday, March 20th, 2018 meeting has been moved to Thursday, March 22nd, 2018. And because there is a budget item on there, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the revision to the 2018-2019 school budget calendar.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one quick thing for me. If it's, there's a chance April 3rd, I may not be around. So I don't, just to, if that date pops out of anybody, just--
Make sure there's at least three others of us here.
Yeah.
Very good.
Or if I had to make arrangements. So maybe, Laura, if you can just coordinate with Peggy, just, I know she's out of town. So, but just want to make sure that we don't find like two, three of us saying the same thing for that date.
April 3rd, I'm good.
Good. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any further communication from the public? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to convene into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular individual. May I have a motion? No, that was the motion. May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We will not be coming back. Thank you for coming.